Good, Anna. We're able to elevate the house.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the Monroe Planning Commission Regular Meeting. Special meeting. Monday, September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. It is now seven P M. I'm gonna ask Anna to take the role.
All right. Commissioners present and establishing a forum. You have commissioners, Paul Dawkins, Lo, Lockhart, Nugent, and Petrino.
Thank you very much. Okay, public comments. So this is time for people to speak to the planning commission in person on issues related to the city of Monroe, except those issues subject to a public hearing. So anything not on the docket for the public hearing tonight. When invited to speak, please approach the podium and state your name and association with the city or area residents. The time will then be started. Each speaker is limited to three minutes.
I would say.
Thank you. Next item up is the approval of minutes, and those are the minutes from the actual regular meeting last week. Any edits or comments? Melanie.
I move to approve the minutes from the September twenty third, twenty twenty four meeting.
You.
My second best.
Girl's seconds. Commissioners in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Okay. So two items on the public hearing. We've switched the order up a little bit. Five point one is now proposed code amendments to MMC Chapter twenty-two dot twenty-two Downtown Commercial Zoning District in Chapter twenty-two dot twelve. Definitions and these with us tonight to present.
Sure, me speaking. Good evening, commissioners. And we're here tonight for the public hearing for the downtown commercial code amendments. You've gone over these code amendments the last few weeks, past few months. And so I'm just going to summarize what the what the amendments are.
Okay.
You're not kidding me yet.
I'll go ahead officially. Everybody's a public hearing. And then go ahead.
Ready now?
Yes, thank you.
Uh. One of the first amendments is on the screen in front of you. This is a proposed edit to the downtown planning area map. It doesn't, it is not a rezone. It does not change any of the boundaries of our neighborhood zones in the downtown area. It just clarifies where those zones are. There was some confusion in the past where the promenade and the historic main boundaries are. So with the new proposed map, it better clarifies that the promenade is an overlay as requested. It's really small to see. And actually, it's not on this, but it is in your your packet. There was requests last time asking for a footnote to be added for the promenade, further explaining what what the promenade is, and that is the first floor businesses facing Main Street. Not sure if my name is gonna go there. I don't know. My internet went down, so. Randy was just doing this.
Even brandy.
Randy, we were just getting started on the downtown code amendment public hearing. Wait, we are back on track. The next proposed amendment to Chapter twenty-two, twenty-two, zero five zero was the land use table, and that is to add the conditional uses of ports, government administration buildings, police stations, and U S post offices within the promenade. As you can see, there's a little number eight next to them. And we are also adding in the footnote section, number eight, conditional uses within the downtown promenade. So we open to the public and then a five days a week. And then minimum of twenty-five hours per week, except for holidays and extenuating circumstances. So just a reminder, this footnote applies currently just to these items in the promenade. Another addition is allowing membership organizations as a permanent use in historic main subzone and removing them as an accessory use in the downtown promenade. Another proposed change is adding a new use called visitor center and allowing it within the historic main neighborhood, the east downtown neighborhood, and within the downtown promenade. In addition, we're proposing, in addition to MMC twenty-two, twelve definitions, um, adding a definition for visitor center. The next proposed change is to add two new uses within the downtown. And so one is banquet meeting reception hall major, and the other is banquet meeting reception hall minor. The major reception hall would be allowed conditionally within the historic main neighborhood and conditionally in the east downtown. Based on our conversations at our last meeting, we added a conditional, allowed it conditionally with the minor use conditionally within the residential neighborhood. And then also permitted within historic main and the east downtown. With those, we added new definitions for those new uses. There were some slight changes to these definitions since the last time that we met. Um, some of them, they they were, they were very minor edits. Um, for example, in this line right here, it says, as determined by the building official, we added pursuant to the building code. Small edits. And the next definition for banquet meeting reception hall minor, just remember we are allowing a minor reception hall would be forty-nine people or less based on occupancy. And major is fifty people. Here is an updated timeline. You can see September thirtieth is today, and we are having our public hearing. And we were planning to bring this to city council after, if the planning commission recommends approval and the workshop starts in tomorrow. So in your packet, there are draft findings of fact and conclusions of law. And with, there's some highlighted, one highlighted area for edits if needed. Um. And.
Okay. I will ask commissioner. Do they have any questions or comments for finer bright? Before we along. Very compressed timeline on that. From September to first of all.
We do have some businesses waiting for simple changes. Um, we're moving it along as as quick as the planning commission council like to.
Well done. Okay. Um, so I guess we have a little questions, listeners. I'm going to start the public testimony portion of this. So I do have this. Three minutes will be allotted for individual speakers. And I'm going to ask one of the commissioners to make a motion to open the public testimony portion of the hearing. Melanie.
I move to open the public testimony portion of the public here.
Girl's seconds. Commissioners in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um. I'll have the speakers come forward and you have a
I don't think anyone's seen that.
Oh, thanks, Anna. Okay.
You might ask for any personal, except in person.
Would you like to do something anyway? Something that's okay, go ahead. And then they did all the other pages on it. Wait, we're here. Is there nothing? Go ahead.
You can just, oh, he said the podium. So I thought, well, there's a podium on there.
Okay. Go ahead, Steve. Okay, we give you three minutes. Okay, you know about that. Yeah, yeah.
I'm Steve Jensen. I'm a resident of Monroe. Oh, you have the address, one one seven zero four one one fifty-fifth street southeast in Monroe. And more, I'm gonna go somewhere because then I won't have to in my real comments to actually save my three minutes over there. Um. But I believe this action you're taking today, and probably don't see it here and what you're showing us, but you have like one little checklist you kind of got through that goes through that says, you know, does it do this? Does it match with the what the comp plan says? And does it do this? And does it do that? You probably have this checklist you go through, and if it meets all these checks, then you feel comfortable that you can say, yes, this is something we're doing. And you can push this to the city council, who will go through the same checklist, or they would then vote to approve or adopt. Right. And I point that out because the next thing is very different. And that's all I wanted to say right now. Thank you.
Okay. Um, if that's the only speaker we have, I'm gonna ask for motion to close the portion. Really?
I move to go. Oh.
Go ahead and put your name wherever.
I'll put my name on there. I want me to start it.
You can sit down too.
Oh. I was I'm sorry. Um, I'm Sherry Novak. I live in downtown Monroe. Um. Yeah, I'm a resident long time. Um, I just want to encourage the city to be flexible, and I would like to see us go back to the way it used to be where we had more permitted uses than small businesses that are truly small businesses, don't have a lot of money. They have to they have to get a piece of property or a site. They have to start paying rent. If everything's conditional, it costs a lot of money to go through all that. And then if they don't get it, that could exhaust their funds. Um, I've been here for, oh, going on forty years. And Monroe used to be the Nordstroms of cities. We would go down to talk to them, and they would like go out of their way to make things work for you and to, you know, tell you, well, yeah, you want to do this, but this is what you can do. And it was super helpful. And I would kind of think we've lost that in a lot of um, micromanaging kind of ways. And I just don't want it to wipe out what we used to have, which was a lot of nice, small businesses that were truly homegrown and not another Starbucks, you know, I don't know. You know, artsy people, that kind of thing. They don't have a hundred grand to waste thirty years while they're going through things. So that's kind of, and I don't have this, but you know, I just really want to see downtown thrive again. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any others speakers for this particular topic? Okay, Melanie.
I move to close this in some portion of the public hearing.
Thank you. Communities in favor of closing the public testimony portion of the hearing?
Aye.
Oh. Okay. Is there any deliberation by commissioners or? Okay, I'm going. We're going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing. Okay.
Let's go. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay. No opposed him. Um. I'm going to ask for a motion. Um, I'm very anxious on the proposal. You see it funny?
I do.
Okay.
Assuming it's correct in the packet. It, um. It's correct on the screen. On that screen, it is. Okay. I move that the planning commission accept the draft findings of fact and conclusions of law contained in the staff report authorized planning commission chair to sign the draft findings of fact and conclusions of law with minor edits as needed. And recommending the Monroe City Council approve the proposed amendments to Chapter twenty-two dot twenty-two MMC, the downtown commercial zoning district in Chapter twenty-two dot twelve MMC definitions.
Also. Twelve seconds. Commissioners in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Appreciate all your work on this, Amy. Really appreciate it. All right. Okay, so we'll move on to the new item five point two, which is the draft Monroe twenty forty-four, and it is a plan of the steering with Bates and Alex. And I'm going to officially open the public hearing. Who will make you go first? Hey.
We'll start the presentation. First, I'd like to walk you through your packet. There's a lot of information in here. There's a summary of the information is in your agenda bill. Some of the highlights, I just want to bring your attention to, is that this is the, the last time the city updated this was in twenty fifteen. Since then, the state has made fifty-four amendments to the Growth Management Act. So we're, that's what we're trying to comply with. Um, the other big component is they send, every time we do a large comp plan update like this, we extend the planning horizon. Our current one now takes us to twenty twenty-four. Um, some of the biggest changes at the state level really have to do with housing. The city is also required to, um, um, comply with the county or the multi-county planning policies, which I'll get to in the presentation. But I just want to let you know that there's some policy consideration for you to think about as you're listening to comments this evening. Um. And then the the big changes in the plan itself. Um, we'll get that to that with the land use, but there are, there are a few, but big picture, not a lot of changes from the two thousand fifteen project. So then I just want to run you through, um, all of the attachments. So you have all eleven, excuse, yeah, eleven chapters, introduction, Imagine Monroe, which is the vision and guiding principles, land use, transportation, economic development, housing, parks, recreation, open space, and trails, capital facilities, utilities, plan shoreline and natural environment. And then we get into, oh, excuse me, chapter eleven is implementation. And then all of the appendices. The way these appendices are set up is they connect to a particular chapter. For example, um, yeah, one A is abbreviation. So it's kind of the generic introduction to the plan. Another example is uh, also, uh, one D is the summary of comments, and I'm going to talk about that as we get into the presentation. The transportation ones have a form behind it, so you can see the connection of where it's connected to or the chapter it's connected to. Um. And then after all of the appendices, you do have a copy of the determination of significance for the supplemental environmental impact statement. What the city decided to do is a full-blown environmental impact statement was done back in twenty fifteen. So this really takes a look at those things that were not considered, that we needed to, um, evaluate to get us to where we think we need to be to achieve our goals for twenty forty-four. Next is the, um, links. There are links in here because there are some huge documents, all of the capital facility plans, the transportation plan, uh, the draft supplemental environmental impact statements. Uh, and then we also did include, when this was sent to Washington State Department of Commerce, they included a checklist, so we had to go through and show our work. Basically, you asked us to do this. This is where you can find it on what page? The same is true for the Puget Sound Regional Council. Again, as a reminder, the Puget Sound Regional Council must approve our plan for us to receive grant funding. So um, it's really important that we are showing them we did our due diligence. Uh, and then again, uh, sorry, finally, the notice of availability and public hearing. There are three pieces of paper and commissioners online. I know one item was emailed to you. The other two will get to you as well. Um, the first page is there was an error in the draft or the comments for the draft SEIS. I'm not sure what happened, but this was part of the Susan Davis comments on the EIS at the end of your packet. So this is the way it should have looked. It gave us some strange formulas. So that's item number one in front of you this evening. The next is we received an email, and there's actually two associated with this one. Um, a property owner who was concerned about changes, um, that is south of the hospital. And that one we'll get to as well. And then we have a letter from Susan Davis as well this evening. So with that, let's start walking through this. Just a reminder, Monroe's been planning before we were required to under the Growth Management Acts, and it's, it's really good policy, trying to make sure that your infrastructure is consistent with what you, your expectations for growth and that you're providing jobs and housing and that you're financing everything. So this is just a quick reminder, all of the plans that we have are on the left. And then on the right are some of the subarea plans. We have one for the downtown commercial zone that was adopted in between two thousand five and two thousand eight, and then the North Kelsey Plan, uh, that was been, have been further refined to, um, allow residential uses, uh, back in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen. And so those are illustrated on the right. And so this is kind of a snapshot. I think it's pretty interesting, uh, looking at where we were projecting our population to be. And in some instances, I think we're actually relatively close. For example, the twenty twenty-five to, or the two thousand five to two thousand twenty-five, um, they assumed our population, and this is for the entire Monroe urban growth area, again, not the city, plus some unincorporated areas that we are allowed to grow into. Uh, our population at twenty thousand five hundred and forty, uh, this year for the city alone, we just hit twenty thousand. That's three hundred and eighty. So, um, I'm happy about that. Uh, so anyway, uh, we've been doing this for a while. I just wanted to show where we've been, how close we've gotten. And again, this is an iterative process. We do this every ten years. All right, where I started going, uh, earlier is the only, we do this for many reasons. It's good practice for a community to figure out where do we think land uses should be? How are we going to pay for the infrastructure to support it? Big pieces are not only just water sewer, but also the transportation network. But in Washington State, we have the Growth Management Act that was passed back in the nineteen nineties, and it had several goals, policies, required elements. And part of, uh, one of those goals, um, sorry, step back. The reason I have the Office of Financial Management up here, also Washington State, is they do the projections. They're telling us approximately how many people we're going to have every twenty years, and they give us a high, medium, and low. That number is given to the counties, and then the counties work, it goes through Puget Sound Regional Council and then to counties, and then we're given an allocation. If we don't think it's right, we can say we think your numbers are incorrect. Uh, this round, it is the medium, and the city of Monroe does believe we can achieve it. So the next level again is the Puget Sound Regional Council, and this is a collection of our elected officials for King, Pierce, Kitsap, and Snohomish Counties, the four region. And the really big changes between the twenty forty and the twenty fifty plan uh, is there is a lot of new requirements around equity focusing on housing and its, uh, income based as well as racial equity, trying to um, change things that weren't very equitable in the past. Um, in Seattle, the example is redlining. We did not have that city of Monroe. So those are some things, then that that came from the state down. Uh, but the biggest one is they changed, they created this new geography. And so each city, each county is broken into different geographies. And you have the metro for us. It's the city of Everett. And then you have large cities for us. That's Bothell and the city of Lindwood. And then they create this new category called high-capacity transit communities. And these are all of the cities that are either getting light rail, have light rail, or bus rapid transit. And at the regional level, they said, you are getting all of this money to build this amazing transportation network. You should be taking the jobs and housing. And so approximately sixty-four percent of all of the growth between now and twenty twenty-four is supposed to go to those high-capacity transit communities. The city of Monroe's geography has not changed. We are still in the cities and towns category. Snohomish County, that collection is only supposed to take about three four, three point four percent of all growth through twenty forty-four. So, um, some of the changes that we're trying to make sure we're consistent with. The next piece of background information, um, each area is supposed to do an analysis on what has been built. And then what land is available, and what is the zoning, where are the critical areas? How much do we think we can accommodate? And so that, for us, is the twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one building lands report. All that analysis was completed by Snohomish County, and it gets approved through the Snohomish County Tomorrow Legislative Process, which is a collection of Snohomish County and all of the cities working together. Uh, and then it is adopted by Snohomish County in their countywide planning policies. Next step in this process is, uh, again, through the same Snohomish County Tomorrow Collaborative. Go through and figure out, all right, the state says we're gonna be, a city of Snohomish County is gonna have X people, and you're gonna need X number of houses, and you're going to need to have jobs to, um, support these people. That is given to the Puget Sound Regional Council, and they come up with a big aggregate number for each of the four counties. At the Snohomish County Tomorrow level, they start working and figuring it out for each city and the county in Snohomish. At the Snohomish County Tomorrow level, they start working and figuring it out for each city and the county in Snohomish County. Those initial targets came out in twenty twenty one. And the city of Monroe did not challenge, we accepted the numbers and believed based on. The capacity we had left to get us through twenty thirty five. If we looked at making some changes to our land uses within the city's urban growth area. We would not need to make an expansion, and so that's the direction. Uh, we worked with and some of that was decided before Lance and I came on board uh by senior leadership. And then finally, reaching out to all of the residents, business owners, uh guests, tourists that come into Monroe. And took information first last year. We have these new uh people and jobs. How, how, how should we do it? And so we took a collection of information and that helped us get to um. Like some land use scenarios that we had out in the public last fall. And that brings me to the next one, oh. Yeah, sorry, go on, next one. Um, I gave you a lot more information on the slide, I had a pre-slide all ready for you. Uh, talking about the Growth Management Act, it's a balancing act, people, jobs. Uh, protecting open spaces, critical areas, shoreline. Make sure we're providing transportation, so we can skip those, skip on this one. And then this one, I really wanted to just remind you all, I'm becoming a broken record at this point, that this is what we're tasked with. How do we accommodate? This number of people, provide this number of housing units. And accommodate this number of jobs by twenty forty four, so that's really our current task. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Alex to just kind of give you the next piece.
Great, thanks Kate, and uh once again, my name is Alex Doopie, I'm the consultant project manager with MIG. Um, we're working with a number of other firms to uh do a lot of the elements that Kate was talking about, so. Uh, it's exciting to actually start talking about this and kind of the final elements. Uh, so I'm going to step through a few slides on both public engagement, but also some of the analysis tools that we use to look at land use. And how that relates to the growth targets that Kate just um just discussed. Uh, but first, I I want to stress that this was a community-based project. Um, we started with the Imagine Monroe Vision, uh we worked with advisory group, we worked with the community, we worked with you, with city council. Um, through a number of different events, we had on per, online and in-person events, so we actually had activities for. You know, asking people how they would apply and locate growth throughout the city to be able to meet those targets. But we also got into the weeds of the comprehensive plan as well as to what are key policies, what are key principles, key rules. And so when you look at just this slide, you know, that is a synopsis of thousands of touchpoints throughout the city. Um, and you know, in different very, different and varying degrees, um, that could be, you know, at a pop-up that city staff. Um, were were a part of, it could be at a formal event that we had. Um, it's also through some online engagement where people could actually place pins and talk about growth, as well as talking about what that means in terms of. Um, community competitiveness and how that happens and how really, you know, people get around to their jobs and and their homes. And so that process continues, um, we'll be launching a process this week to actually ask for input on the draft comprehensive plan now that we're in that that final draft form. Um, but it was a a large and significant portion of this process over the last eighteen months or so. Next slide please. So just a bit on some of the the technical qualities of how we got to where we are today with the real future land. Um, as Kate mentions, I will restart with the buildable lands inventory from Snohomish County. Uh, they look at a variety of different kind of market factors as well as vacant redevelopable lands. And then they also overlay things like critical areas, steep slopes, wetlands. Um, areas that are, you have sensitive species, and so those all go into the mix when you start to think about. Both developable lands and what that means in terms of meeting your development targets. Um, Kate mentioned those. Um, buildable lands inventories, they they stop, they essentially have a a stop line at twenty twenty one. However, growth doesn't stop um within the city of Monroe, and so the next piece that we looked at. In addition to what the B L I was, we said how many, how many residences or employment areas have been permitted since twenty twenty one? Did you actually get credit for that? And so we looked at that, we revised the buildable lands inventory to account for that, those properties that were already developed. Um, we were able to count both residents as well as employment numbers um to meet your target, and that essentially leaves us with that. And that nexus of where do we want to go, but what do we have to do still to meet, meet the targets? And so these are just some examples, the one on the left is actually the buildable lands inventory. That shows vacant, partially used and redevelopable, uh, just to give you a sense of what those are. Bacon is self-explanatory, partially used means that it could be a a large parcel with a very small. Um, building on it, so there may be space like on on that existing parcel that could be developed. Um, and redevelopable lands are really lands that are developed now, but that typically the land value is more valuable than the. The structure on top of that. So it doesn't mean that those areas will develop, redevelop, it just means that there is a, there's imbalance between land as well as the, to the structure. So we look at all of those and then the second map on the right side starts to apply that to where your existing zoning and future land use classes are. So when we think about the the buildable lands inventory, it's not a blank slate, we look at that underlying zoning. But as we get into the scenarios and the alternatives, which we looked at um late last year. It really starts to have, you know, consider how those areas might change over time, where do we want to make changes? What is the community telling us about connectivity or access to services or types of housing that people want to see? So we take all this information, develop the scenarios and then, you know, come out with a series of numbers that we can test through the supplemental EIS process. Excellent. And so with that, you know, we use to develop the scenarios and to do some initial testing, we used a scenario planning tool, which. Um, essentially looks at what the buildable lands inventory has minus the modifications that we made to acknowledge permitted projects. And then we started to look at, okay, a series of what ifs, what if you developed this with. Certain types of residential densities, what if you looked at mixed use or commercial, how would that start to apply? In terms of meeting the targets for the best, both housing and employment, and so we did a number of different scenarios, we um. Solidified two specific scenarios that we invented with the community and with planning commission, city council, and ultimately came up with. Proposed action, which was evaluated in EIS. So I'm just showing a couple of examples of how the tool works and how we apply different, different development types. Uh, but it's a good way to test a series of what ifs. Excellent, please. And so when we do this, and apologies for the little red circle, don't worry about that, that's misplaced, you can see uh. Through a number of blue highlighted parcels. And I'm just showing this as an example, this is zone generally for detached residential. Um, those parcels came up, I believe, in the buildable lands inventory, so we identified that in the scenario tool, and then we looked at, okay. If we changed land use this year, what would that actually mean in terms of units? How would that start to change, you know, street state, other elements that might be required as part of that? And so again, this is just a tool, but it's a way that we can be as specific as possible in the types of development that we might see, whether that's on vacant parcels. On potentially redevelopable lands or on partially vacant properties. So again, just an example of a, of a certain area. Excellent, please. And then it does get fairly detailed, you know, when we get into, you know, what this actually looks like on site, we do account for. Um, site requirements, so we went through your zoning code and actually built into the system what your existing zones allow, um, and that includes setbacks. Both rear and front, amount of landscaping requirement, if it's a commercial space, we actually took into account some of the parking requirements, so that's, you know, it's not a. Commercial space, build it wall-to-wall, it's like, you know, we have to buy parking, we know that there are certain F A R requirements, so how does that start to um apply? So it does get fairly detailed into into the tool. And again, um, there are a number of assumptions within that, but this, we believe, gets us as close as possible to identifying what's actual development. Next slide please. So when we started to develop the scenarios, um, we. Ran that through a public process and then we also went through the supplemental EIS process. We talked to community about what those areas start to look like, and this was um what was called a proposed action as a part of the uh SEIS. And then, you know, as we started to discuss with the advisory committee and others, some things started to fall out or to be added to the map. And so you'll see these, these dashed lines that I'll explain, you know, basically kind of what the recommendations were, um, either to keep or to change. Um, some of the bigger changes is, you know, actually looking at your R four to R seven density, so residential areas within those areas that are vacant. Um, actually moving those up to the R seven designation, that allows a little bit more density, um, but still maintains that, that's. Essentially detached neighborhood deal. Uh, it does allow options as well to terminal housing, which is a state requirement, um, now, that's one of the new requirements that Kate was talking about. Um, some of the other areas as a part of the public process, one hundred and fifty-fourth. Was identified as saying maybe we should make this a mixed-use corridor, that's actually recommended to be removed, and so we removed that on the draft, future land use map. People felt it was too um taxing on the existing neighborhoods, there wasn't a lot of opportunity there, and so some of those specific elements were were removed. I think the big piece with this aside from R four to R seven is really the focus on downtown and in the North Kelsey area. Because what we heard over and over from the community was, we want to be local, we want local businesses, we want to live near local businesses. And so there was um a fair bit of focus throughout the policy development on really making sure that those areas are active and engaging. And supporting both local businesses as well as future health. Excellent, please. So with that, um, you'll see uh the twenty fifteen map on the left side versus the twenty forty four map. Rolling off my, my, my tongue. Um, as Kate mentioned, there are very few changes. The big yellow changes are R four to R seven, it doesn't significantly change the, the look and assumptions for growth. However, for vacant areas, it does add a few more units, does add a little bit more options. Um, a couple of other changes, if you look in the northwest corner, um, which is. Was assigned to R seven in the twenty fifteen plan. Um, we've actually re-designated that to mixed use, and that doesn't mean that you couldn't see, you know, some single family in there. We know that there's critical areas and those, those, on those lots as well too. But from a development perspective, we do believe there's opportunity to create those small nodes that the community has told us they they want to see. Um, with that, when, when people want that commercial use, you need rooftops, and so that's one reason why we're looking at a slightly different density. Um, a couple others along Chain, Chain Lake Road, uh, Chain Lake Road, excuse me, um, there's a small node, uh, of purple. Right there, that was a desire from a number of community members to create, again, that small commercial node within residential areas. Um, people felt it's hard to get around, get, get to places for daily services. Those are areas that, um, you know, do have some critical areas to it, but, you know, we felt could be opportunity for small community commercial. So again, not a large development, but, you know, small community commercial space. Otherwise, um, for the most part, the math is very similar to what you see, there is some uh changes from multifamily to mixed use. One reason why we did that is when you initially did your buildable lands inventory, you're actually fine on housing. Um, you met your targets on housing, but you didn't meet your targets on jobs, and so we had to make some adjustments to still allow. Multifamily but add some employment potential in there as well too. So you see in some of those mixed-use areas, they still allow apartment buildings, it's just that there's not opportunity for mixed use for them. And then again, get, again, gets to balance into the targets of employment and housing. With that, I'll turn back on the table.
Actually, we're going to stand this thing for one more moment, um, the specific areas that we are looking at changing from a. A predominantly single family to a mixed use is one seventy ninth. From a hundred, or excuse me, from that state route five twenty-two down to Main Street. Uh, and then the triangle below the hospital district. And then, uh, there are two small changes, um. My opinion, one's a correction, uh, there are a few properties along North Kelsey Street that used to be a general commercial. They transitioned to multifamily in uh twenty nineteen, we've heard from the property owner, that's really. Uh, not what they wanted, and again, as like, as Alex was saying, we really need. Commercial, and so we reassessed it and it made sense to keep it or return it to commercial, because it would help us. With our targets. Uh, and then the last really minor one is also a correction and it's down, um. The, by the Boys and Girls Club with the food bank, that property got missed when the city. Uh, C Y rezone was done in twenty nineteen, and so that is uh being changed to mixed use to reflect what the actual use is. So those are um very detailed um changes in the map. Okay, next slide. So now I'm going to walk you through each of the chapters, uh, beginning with land use and um. So we talked about how we got there, and I just want to remind you, there are fourteen goals under the Growth Management Act. Several of them have to do with land use, the first is urban growth, reduce sprawl. Um. And we need to show, uh, it's kind of a crossover with the environment, but we also need to show uh open space and. Natural corridors, so in the land use chapter, it really focuses on showing you how we're accommodating. That twenty forty four, twenty forty four growth projection. And the appendices associated with that are our show your work, so um appendix. Back and forth. Uh, so appendix. Three A is all of the land use capacity analysis, and this is some of the work that you saw last year, it has the heat maps of where. Detached residential is, where duplexes are, where the commercial is located. And then it walks you through the, all the steps that um Alex just described, so I wanted to make that connection for you. Next slide. Transportation is also extremely important, how do you get people around? And a reminder again for all who are listening tonight and the planning commission, the city does not have control over U S two. State Route five twenty-two or S R two oh three, those are all state routes. We uh must accept what the state uh decides is the appropriate level of service standard. Where everything else, Monroe gets to choose what is your level of service standard. And the big change for this conference and plan update is the state did say. You can't look at cars, you gotta look at your bigger picture, and so the biggest change in this plan is we are introducing a multimodal. Um, level of service standard, and so when you look at both the transportation element. As well as um appendix four A, it's uh that had the link. You will see in there, there are now bicycle networks and pedestrian networks included in the transportation chapter. This was um done concurrently with the Trails Master Plan, which is part of the parks and open space. So those are really the, the biggest changes. Kelsey has a quick question.
Okay, Kelsey, would you like to ask a question?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Um, on the, uh, for the commercial use, um, do we know how many? The, like, current commercial use buildings we have that are actually vacant? Right now? Do you have a number?
Yeah, we have not done an updated study since, was it two thousand? Nineteen. Um, and that's one thing that if you need specific data, I'm more than happy to reach out to Patrick, I believe he has that information. Uh, Patrick Dougherty is um our economic development specialist.
Yes.
Consultant.
Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Which is the next topic, nice segue. Uh, so economic development, uh, this is not a required chapter in the Growth Management Act, but it's been something that's very important to the city of Monroe. All the way back into the nineteen nineties, this really, um, the, the piece. This is just a general update on existing conditions, uh, also looked at some scenario planning. And then uh it also went through the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats analysis. Which is actually a requirement for an economic development chapter, so um. There is the chapter itself and then appendix five A is the existing conditions, which um, the economic. Development Advisory Board did a lot of work for the Planning Commission and City Council. Next slide. Housing, this is really the, been the focus of the state, uh, as well as Puget Sound Regional Council. Uh, not only do you have the chapter itself, but we also included. Uh, attachments, the city had adopted a housing action plan back in twenty twenty one. Uh, there is emergency shelter and housing analysis in the appendices, which is one of the new requirements as well. Uh, there's also analysis in here for middle housing, which. Middle housing is duplex, triplex, fourplex, cottage apartments. Uh, so it's, it's your in-between, you're detached to your big apartment complexes. And the, generally, they used to be your entry level or less, or. Not, yeah, lower cost housing to get into the housing market. City of Monroe does not meet the minimum threshold where we are being required to do it by the state. But it is one of our strategies trying to accommodate the housing uh and population. And the small table on the right underneath the pictures of the housing. This is a new state requirement. We have to show how we can accommodate enough ti- enough housing for people by income bands. And it's broken out by the average median income. And so you'll see in our very lower um income band, we are rec- we are suggesting that we will be accom- accomplishing that primarily through apartments. And then as you work your way up through the um different income levels, then we're moving into different types of detached or even possibly still attached housing. So in addition to the chapter itself, there are quite a few appendices. Um again, as I mentioned, the housing action plan in appendix six A. Um as I mentioned early on, we also had to do a lot of work about racial disparity. We have to figure out areas that might have been. Uh discriminated in the past. Big picture, we could not find historic. Uh redlining a term used that discriminated specifically on different types of minorities. Uh but that's included in the analysis. Uh appendix sixty is the emergency housing analysis and it's very similar to what Alex walked you through. It shows you the map. It talks about the zoning, where you could potentially have conversion, uh new construction. Uh and then appendix sixty talks about the inclusive community analysis. So at the very beginning of this comp plan process, uh Mig, our consultant team, went through trying to figure out. Um where are policies that could be seen as displacing people? Are there better ways to change the policies? So all of the policies in the current draft plan. Are now in that green category. So we're we have avoided the previous language that might have displaced people. Next slide. Parks, recreation, open space and trails. For the most part, there is not a significant change. The city of Monroe just adopted um the pros plan, which is parks, recreation and open space in twenty twenty one. The new piece for this plan is the Trails Master Plan. Again, it was done in conjunction with the transportation element. And so there are some pieces of the Trails Plan that you will see in the Parks Chapter. But you will also see some components of it in the transportation plan and those really help us get to that multimodal level of service standard. So it's a really big picture uh for the transportation cha- um changes. The transportation master plan, I had a link for you because it is one of the larger documents to get through. Thanks. Thank you. So capital facilities, um. It's not, it's a technical change, but in twenty fifteen, capital facilities and utilities were connected. Kind of makes sense. There's some overlap, but under the Growth Management Act. You have to update uh ongoing. Financing plans specific for capital facility and you have to amend that your comprehensive plan. Typically, when you do that, it's associated with your budget. But the Growth Management Act says you can only amend your comprehensive plan once a year with a few uh exemptions. And the capital facilities with a budget uh amendment specifically is one of those exemptions. So we chose to separate. Capital facilities from utilities again. Uh the big thing in this as well at is the po- our public works side of the house. Uh updated the water or potable water, sanitary sewer, the treatment plant and the stormwater plants. And so they are being adopted with this as the appendices. You receive links for all of those because those are huge documents. Um but what's in. Your packet this evening, a piece of that is uh appendix eight A, that's the capital improvement plan. That's the first, the six-year financing plan. So you can see by category what the city is planning on uh paying for in the next six years. Next slide. So utilities, we pulled out anything that had to do with the city and focused on what was still left uh in the uh requirement for what's included in a utility plan. That's really um uh your electrical system, your cable internet. Uh in the city of Monroe, it's chosen to include solid waste that's been in there for the last twenty years. So we continue to provide information on that. Inside. Thank you. Shoreline and natural environments, um. The city is required to adopt a separate shoreline master program. It is on a separate timetable, but it is part of your natural environment chapter. You will see throughout the chapter that we're starting to talk about climate change. This is one of the new requirements and we will be required to adopt a brand new chapter or uh integrate it into our existing one by twenty twenty nine. It talks about reducing greenhouse gas emissions. We have to do tree canopy analysis. So a lot more work to come, but we started putting some pieces in place. That these are the things we're going to be looking at, looking at as well as some big picture analysis. Um and I'm happy to say that the multimodal transportation level service standards, that's one of the pieces that will help us achieve some of the climate change uh goals. Next slide. All right, end of my presentation. Just a reminder of your remaining schedule. Uh we have the public hearing this evening. Uh we did issue a possible continuance of tonight's meeting. The reason we had asked for this is we needed some technical changes uh to be incorporated at our attorney's suggestion. Mig was able to uh make all of those corrections last week. So all of the elements are available for the public and that are in your packets today. From a technical, technical perspective, you do not need to extend tonight's public hearing. After hearing public comments, if you choose to, the notice is still there. If you do not need it for next Monday, we can cancel the public hearing and you can direct staff to to take next steps. Um I did hear there was a request to have the map, so can you go back before you get to your public comment? How about start with the do the two thousand fifteen? That's. No, no, that man. Okay, so that is the end of the overview of what is in this draft.
Okay, thanks Kate. I'm gonna ask commissioners if they have questions. Carl?
One couple of questions, um. I hope pertaining to the um. Um I am, I I know we've been through the life and we've changed our our Florida, our set. So if if we have to be building this car seven and that's particular designation of. Excuse me, density. Correct, I guess the chamber um. Are they required to be at that density or is it gonna be lower?
So we haven't gotten to that. That's like phase two of of conference and planning. So the first part is this future land use map. And then you do the citywide rezone to if the if the planning commission and the council are like, yep, I think this is what we need to get to. Uh the population housing and employment that we were assigning for twenty twenty four. The next phase is a citywide rezone and then we start working on the zoning code. Right now, the um. The detached residential designations, which is our seven or fifteen. Do not have a minimum density requirement. So there is the potential that if you have it, you're still not gonna achieve what you're going after. Um our higher density does have minimum uh minimum residential threshold as well as the mixed use and um downtown commercial.
Okay, my next question on zoning. Is um on mixed use. So areas that are changed to mixed use, what is the? The the biggest difference, if I understand correctly, is that you could have um. Um how would that that hold multiple then?
No, it's much bigger than that. So um the both in actually in all of the cases where we're looking at changing from detached residential, that's all you have. Single family house, that's it. So the mixed use, we actually have three different zoning types for mixed use today. And so that would be part of the next phase is working with the planning commission and city council and going out to the community. Is it a neighborhood? Is it general? And there's a medical one. And so it's not only allowing attached housing, but there could also be professional office. There could be um. Uh restaurants, I believe, is in the general mixed use. And so based on what we have heard so far from the community. Will be aligning that, but we'll be coming back to the planning commission, city council. Is this what you heard? Uh and then of course give the community more opportunity.
That is a good time.
Yeah.
Um also, if if it is changed to, there is change to mixed use. Does that greatly change the tax base on itself?
It might. Um it's not an automatic change, but um. If you're starting to see the development differently, um it can positively or it could increase it, but it might also. This are, so if you've got like a residential node that's now next to a commercial node, it has the potential of making it less valuable. So it really, it depends and we would see it over time.
Anything else? But it's not a light switch, Kate, not overnight, not the next tax assessment. It's only. Randy?
Hi, um. So everything that we'd seen for the drafts on the center focused growth and on the center growth and neighborhood nodes. Showed the general commercial area along highway two, turning to mixed use. And this um this map leaves it as general commercial. I was expecting that to say mixed use. Um what am I missing?
You're not. Alex and I have been coordinating on this. This is one of the things that uh both downtown as well as the entire US two corridor. The zone, the the land use doesn't nation doesn't needs to change the land use. Uh the zoning needs to change. And so we wanted to follow up with a second map that is not recommending a land use change. Because it's it's where it should be. It's the zoning needs to change. And so that um that is missing and I'm making a note of it right now. And we had talked about that and did not get it to you.
Yeah, and I think maybe a point of clarification too between future land use classes and zoning. So the the future land use class, which is what you're seeing on the map here, that's your, that's your general kind of land use desire. It's it's what. It's a future projected map. Our map is what we want to see. Zoning is what occurred today. And so underneath these future land use classes could be a number of zones, but actually implement that. So as Kate was mentioning. You know, the different types of mixed use, your future land use classification map can say mixed use, but the zoning might have three different mixed use categories underneath that. So I just wanted to clarify that. This, this is not. Regulatory in the sense that it doesn't set site design requirements, it doesn't set those things. That's really what you're telling me. Interline zoning, so that's the next step is to align that with with, yeah, kind of. What you want to see for growth today.
Yeah, but we're gonna add a map.
Yeah. Correct.
Um. Can some remind me, when we were doing the. The interactive public events and stuff where we're having, you know, what do you want to see here? And and the community was giving, you know, wonderful input. Was there any kind of back and forth or like staff response to some of the suggestions about? Like unintended consequences of of doing that? Like was the community part of that or was that a task that was kind of left? More to us than to the community. So like if you're looking at places where people like, well, I think, you know, mixed use would be good here. Was there then a conversation with the general public about, well, but you know, just as a heads up, this, you know, X, Y, Z could happen or it could lead to this. Were they part of any of that or?
So there's, so I think, yeah, I could start. So the the first piece you're talking about, we played the the game with the vertical pieces. So that that set the direction for developing those various scenarios. Um that also set the direction for how we started to develop a supplemental environmental impact statement. So those were formally analyzed um through that process. Uh the second meeting, which we have back. Three months ago, June.
Yeah.
Uh that's where we actually looked at trade-offs. So we had that draft map that was evaluated in the in the EIS. And we actually talked about, okay, this is the growth we still need to accommodate. This is what's on the map now. What are the trade-offs for that? And if there are trade-offs, how would you address that through through the game essentially? So um we use that as a tool to be able to identify potential priority, you know, for where where growth could occur. Um where we want to see transportation improvements, particularly with the new multimodal level of service requirements. Uh where would you want to focus from the walkability or mobility standpoint? In relation to those future growth scenarios. So that future land use map is that you're seeing now is really an outcome of that process. Certainly, everything that was put on the map didn't make it to the final map. But that was, that was the direction that you're given to the community for that.
And that was, that was also part of that online, the last online survey, you could put nodes um on the map and then we were also asking. Um it was like highly support, don't support for the goals and policies. That was also part of the last outreach.
And and one of the other things that we did, if you, for the folks that came by our booth, is that we had maps and we had different types of. Residential and commercial mixed use and and people were indicating on the map. Where they felt that those uses were appropriate. So we kind of put all of those pieces together into into um, you know, what what ultimately came out of the proposed future language.
Thank you. Part of that admittedly, I kind of knew the answer, but I wanted to also just have it restated here during the table.
And if you're interested in the raw results, forget which appendix it is, but we have um a few hundred pages over all of those results.
You can see all of all of those, all of that information. To the top, yeah.
The two, the two, the major, it's one scene.
You know, she's already gone over all the uh other groups like the C E C that Matt and you met with and provided feedback to, right?
That's correct. And so those, for those meetings, we weren't involved with that. We stepped through each of the elements um at at each meeting. So we were able to step through, I think, most all of them through the meetings and. Focusing specifically on land use um for two of the meetings for the map to make sure we. Had both community input, um you're dialed in or it should have been on the map, but also just, you know, make sure that the technical aspects were correct.
Randy?
Okay, I know you did answer my question, but I still have a follow-up question to that because. I mean, on one seventy ninth, for instance, um the the map changed color to show the mixed use. So um. I I just want to understand again why the red general commercial didn't change to mixed use when it did change in other areas. So what's the difference between um that compared to the zoning changes that need to change for? This red stuff on highway two to change to um mixed use?
Yeah, so we, the the red general commercial is a much higher intensity of land use, which is not. The same as mixed use. And so um after reevaluating, we want it still to be. Heavy commercial uh and and restaurants, but we want to add in that layer of residential. And so to keep um. So it's, so to show the difference, it's a much more intensive land use. We want to keep the red. And then when, as we're working on the zoning, we will be layering in. It will be very similar to um the attorney placed uh North Kelsey overlay. That explicitly states you can do infill and mixed use with residential that is now allowed, which currently is not. And it it's not just North Kelsey, it's the entire red section along US two on both sides of um of the freeway or US two.
Okay, and I think that's the first time that 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 part's been explained, right? Because um before, okay. Um and there's no way that's going to get forgotten about because that was one of the major, major changes that people were uh mentioning in all the feedback forums. And I know there's some things that we're not gonna get to in twenty twenty five, but um this is one that we will have on our work, scope of work.
Yeah, and that's, and that again. Like Alex and I have been talking about this, it just didn't get incorporated. It needs, we need a second map in this document that. Um solidifies that these zones, even the color's not changing. The expectation is you're gonna have a higher intensity or a different use that's not permitted. Which will be captured through the um the zoning process.
Thanks, Randy. Commissioners. Other questions? Anyone else? Any other commissioners online? Questions? Any other commissioners online, questions? Thanks, Kelsey.
So I guess I want, I want clarification on that too. So if we, if we vote for this right now. That no one could go in there and do a mix, um, like a restaurant with a couple floors of residential on the top until we do the zone. Is that what we're hearing?
Yeah, that is correct. And I, I want to be very clear. The planning commission, after you take public testimony and you read through all the documents and we answer all of your questions. Then the city council is going to repeat this process. And if they say, yep, this is the direction we want to go. This map, this comp plan map does not take effect for sixty days. And so my, my intent is that during that sixty day window where somebody could challenge. It it doesn't go into effect. I will be working on that background zoning and land use changes. So. Hopefully, at the end of that sixty day quarter one of twenty five is the goal to get the zoning map to match the land use map.
And then also on that triangle, um. By. Uh, yeah, that one. It was like I was doing it. Um. I, when it goes to mixed use, they can stay residential, right? That's just another option. Um, when they sell to go to mixed use or how, how does it work when something goes from residential to mixed use? When does um? It stays what it is? And then can it stay residential in mixed use? Or is that this overlay that we're talking about? That they're allowed to have residential.
Yeah, so so the mixed use is not an overlay. It it outright allows different types of uses. Uses is, it's just not as a high intensity as the general commercial. Um, the difference would be going from residential to mixed use. Those existing detached residential would become legal nonconforming. In our code, it is extremely generous for existing residential dwellings. Um, so we can get into that another day, but the the house or the. Houses there, yes, they can stay, but they would become a legal nonconforming, which is a little bit different than outright permitted.
Thinking about like the comments that came in earlier today on like, how, how is this going to affect those residents on? Uh, like right away, it doesn't do anything right away or it does?
So the, the, the property could still be sold. Yeah, it's still be sold, but the future land use class, the eventual zoning, um, which you have six months generally from to June to. Yeah, to do that. So you can still sell that property. It's really about the development, future development. So if a person. Were to buy that parcel and it was mixed use, then you know, the mixed use requirements would be, would be part of that. But you know, they could still sell their property as a single, single family home. It doesn't, it doesn't change that requirement. They have to tear it down and do something else, but they can maintain the existing use until that property owner decides to do something else.
Yeah, in in the comments in that email were valid. Um, you know, the city Monroe has a finite amount of land. And. We are being asked to accommodate more growth and for some of the reasons we've already talked about this evening. The state says you can't just keep consuming rural land, agriculture land, forest land. And so pressures put on cities that provide infrastructure and water and sewer. To support these various uses. And so um. That, that is the process we're in, but it, it will long term probably have an impact on that property. So yes, that's something that you all will have to grapple with. Change.
And then on the, um, I know that we've had a couple of commercial buildings built um, in the last like year or so, right? Like that huge warehouse. Um, how many jobs, do we know how many jobs that brought in and where we're at on the count currently for? Like our projected. That, that number's probably been updated lately for.
Uh, it, it was part of the initial analysis. It has not been updated. The building that you're talking about on Fryland Boulevard at US two is actually still under construction. I believe the first suite um, is one existing business is moving into that suite. Uh, so it's still vacant, unfortunately, or not, not totally vacant, but it's, yeah, we have not seen it.
Remind everyone that it wasn't intended to produce jobs because of the airport.
Yeah, it's good thing.
We specifically zoned that area for a specific warehouse type use.
Yeah.
So, so the property owner could use it, but it can't be high um, humid density because of the. So just keep that in mind.
Yeah, and unfortunately, um. I don't know, Alex and I might talk about this a little bit more, but on our zoning map, you will see a little airplane oval over the city. And because we have first airfield, we are limited in some of the development around the community. Because of the accident crash zones. And so zones around the airport, as Jay was explaining, uh, are. Many of them are significantly impacted on what and how they can be developed. And that is one of the properties.
Thank you.
Sorry, I just see one other difference from the, the drafts that we had to now. Um, on between like where the pink for the tourist commercial highway two. And then the purple triangle that we've um, that we've turned from residential all to mixed use. Yes, you're almost there. Yes, uh, so to the up and to the left. So now there's like the yellow that's for residential. Is that to um, is that to show because there already is residential there and our map before had mixed use? Yes, that. That wasn't, um, that wasn't something that was called out on the previous drafts. So is that just a fix?
That's an error. Presidential, that needs to say um, mixed use, I believe it's mixed use um, on the land use it's mixed use. But on the zoning, it's mixed use uh, medical. Thank you for your share, right?
Mixed use medical departments right now, right?
Uh, in that area, possibly, but that was part of your twenty fifteen comp plan change and. The citywide rezone in twenty nineteen.
Anything else, Randy?
Sorry, no, I meant to lower my hand.
Okay, thanks very much for your questions, commissioners. We'll get to the uh, now move to the public testimony portion. Three minutes, we allotted allotted to individual speakers. Um, I'm gonna ask for a motion of open the public testimony portion, Melanie.
A motion that, that we open the public testimony portion of the public hearing.
For the seconds, commissioners in favor, please say aye. Thank you. Okay. Mister Jensen, you're on the list first. You don't need to state your address in the first state of the course.
Let's see, let me get my thoughts. If I see Jensen, remember, uh, resident of Monroe. I'm gonna start with a quick little story. Has nothing to do with tonight's thing other than what happened. About twenty years ago, a court ruled that a city somewhere across in this country. Had to allow an adult entertainer business because the city had zoned nothing for it. And they ended up stuck with it where the person, the developer wanted to put it because the city had blocked it out. We learned from that, that governments and courts can say you have to have certain zones or certain uses. You have to. But you don't have to have them everywhere. So of course Monroe did their thing. They put a couple zones that they would never get blindsided by a court. But they didn't allow it. There's a couple special uses somewhere in the city to avoid that. But it's not everywhere. I, I start with that because. There's another thing out there that we keep being told. I was on the planning mission years ago. And kept being told you have to have essential public facilities. I believe that has been abused. Too far. As a city, yes, you have to provide those zones and those uses through the city. But you don't have to have it everywhere. Just like the adult entertainment uses. You have to have enough to satisfy the needs. But you don't have to have it everywhere. I think you need to make a note in your, in your tourist commercial. That you really are focused on creating an area. That is supportive of. Hotels and restaurants and businesses that would attract tourism. And extend the tourism from the fairgrounds. Which means not in this document, but if you put that language in here. Then when you're doing the zoning, it'll be a lot easier to say, we're gonna scratch out. Essential public facilities from this particular region. We don't need to allow it here. We can have plenty of it throughout the rest of the city. We don't need to allow it here. And the difference with what you're doing tonight. This is the most subjective decision you get to make. Yes, you follow certain rules for growth management acts and all those things. But you still get to decide what you want to do, what the city wants to do. You want to put a purple zone in the middle of that yellow zone? Guess what? You get to do it. There's not a checklist that forces you that you have to do it. You get to choose to do it. The last thing I want to mention, I'll have to show you on the map because this got missed when I was on the board. I need you, you need to take a look at this. Red area, and for people on the computer, I'm sort of. Um, out there where like the mail station is, area, yeah, it's right there. Um. I feel you need to make a section there that is. Opened up blank like where the bypass would go. So that future expansion doesn't happen there. Making it harder for a wash dock to ever put the bypass in. You need to keep it as easy as possible. And you need designate what you need to do, whatever needs to happen up there that they may come through and decide, hey, we need to buy this land and we put the road in. But if you zone it as high density commercial and somebody puts in a Walmart. They're not gonna want to tear it down for a, a road. So that was all I thought. Thank you.
Susan and Bonnie, um, you're both on here. Would you both like three minutes each?
Maybe.
Okay.
He's gonna play Lena to what I miss. Or, or I could do six. Your choice. I am Susan Davis. I have been a real estate agent here in Monroe for twenty nine years. So I've been to a lot of the properties there on the map, um, houses, land, all the, all that sort. Um, so I know it pretty well and I sent you a very detailed uh, document that I'm hoping that we read. Um, and and got the gist of the concerns in various areas. And I just found out that the comp plan document was available in full form on Friday, so I haven't had a chance to look through that whole thing yet. Uh, so I put together just a few notes uh, in the letter that that I sent you today. Um, so I'm just gonna highlight a few things. First of all, um, there was a slide earlier about planning growth versus actual growth. Over those twenty nine years, there's been a lot of annexations that, that. Built that population number, but there was also a whole lot of vacant land on the North Hill side that, that was developed. We don't have large vacant parcels that we can work with anymore. We're left with. With small parcels that have to be, or that, you know, is proposed to be redeveloped. Um, and over the pandemic, a lot of those homes that were identified in the Bill of the Last Report as being. Um, having some disparity, disparity between the land value and the structure value. Is now flipped because people that couldn't buy homes um, of that. You know, in a price point that they could afford, they bought those older homes and they fixed them up. So you're gonna see. Um, you know, if you, if you care to look at those properties, you're gonna see that, that they're not. That dilapidated house anymore. They're all fixed up. Um. So uh. There were, back to my letter here, um. Let's see, um. I also wanted to mention the work that's been done here is a lot of high level work where there, where folks are looking at mapping and spreadsheets. Um, and that's really different from knowing the land and seeing what's there. And I say that specifically relating to um, three different areas on the map. There's the, the two purple zones on the North Hill side. Roosevelt is sort of is farmland that's surrounded by R five, um, R five. Land that's in the county and agricultural ten acre lots. So a development of that nature in that community is gonna impact the neighbors significantly. Um, not to mention it's disconnected from the rest of the neighborhood where it's intended to serve. Um, by the bypass, it's not gonna serve those neighbors to the east and it's not gonna so well serve the people to the south. Either. And I would challenge you to actually go out and walk that road and see what you think. Um, the more reasonable location for that would be at the housing line site, which is at the, at the lower intersection. That's the large parcel there. Does that mean I'm done? Um, the second one, and, and there's a lot of critical areas on there. Critical areas being steep slopes and, and wetlands. Uh, the other one is Chain Lake Road, that site, um, in the packet that I gave you. Um, or, or I submitted previously, that actually has links to videos. That show you the critical areas in action on those sites. So that's not gonna be developable. Um, to any nature that's gonna make it pencil out for any developer. So what that's gonna do is increase the taxes on those properties. Um, so that those people are gonna get, gonna get priced out for no reason at all. Um, the next area is that triangle area that we were just talking about. That area is all, for the most part, single family, um, rambler's. In a neighborhood that has one way in and one way out. Converting that to mixed use is gonna open it up to potentially six stories according to the development plan or to the, according to the draft conference of plan. Um, so imagine a rambler home next to a six story mixed use development. Well, that's gonna need to gentrification, increase taxes, and that's gonna price those folks out. Um.
Okay, Susan, would you like to have Bonnie see his times you? I mean, is that allowed? But she can be this voice. The, the chair, the chair has a pretty wide. Would you have the six minutes of your partnership?
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. So anyway, that's gonna be a significant impact to the folks in that neighborhood. Um. And then um, the areas um, in south of highway two, um, uh. Essentially, the more downtown area, all of that, that area is. Has been shown to have a moderate risk of displacement. And so develop further development and that zoning in that area. Is also going to lead to gentrification that, that's gonna increase taxes, switch people out of their homes. And they don't have a place to go. There is no other place. Those are all currently affordable homes and in both. The triangle area and the downtown area. And it's my understanding that, that all the guidelines say that you should preserve existing affordable housing stock. And that is not happening in these areas. Um, so that's a big concern for, for me. Um, and I'm glad you guys noted a couple of other things back in that triangle area. Um, it's gonna, they're, they're gonna be legal nonconforming. Uh, uses until, you know, some future date. Um, if this goes through, but can they add ADUs in that zone? Uh, if it's on mixed use, uh, where they have a rambler, if they want to have an ADU, they're not gonna be able to. Um. So that's a concern. Um, next last thing I wanted to talk about was annexation agreements. Um, in the goals section, it says the end, that, that they're. The goal was to suggest requiring annexation agreements that include middle housing and or housing options affordable to those earning thirty to eighty percent AMI. I wanted to bring it to your attention that. Um. That Monroe has an annexation problem. Um, there are four areas in the urban growth area. That um, have historically declined to annex into the city. So that is a problem and adding more layers. Um, to the rules to, to get them to annex is gonna, gonna make them say no all over again.
We need to get to our next speaker. I'm sorry.
Okay.
There is six forty five, so.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker, some kind of. Next speaker, some kind of last analysis, Wang Xiao?
Oh, Wendy.
Wendy, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so this is Wendy. Um, I'm a resident in Monroe and I live in the community around the Chain Lake area. So I would like to oppose the proposal of that specific area, which is on the Chain Lake Road. Uh, as you can see, the purple in the middle, uh, we should target it for mixed use and. Propose, yeah, that area and propose for the, the, for the north, northeast, like resident. Uh, for basically three reasons. So first of all, from northeast resident perspective, if, well, if they would like to access a commercial or. Or business, whatever, just within less than half a mile, they can reach to Goodwill and Walmart. And then within their two miles, they already reached to the kind of commercial center to Monroe, which have a lot of business services. And also like the commercials on the area. So in terms of trying to access for what's their need from their perspective. It just less than one minute's drive instead of parking into a limited. Really limited area with limited business, they can just one minute's less. Drive to a much more which area which you can access to, which much more, much, much more service will that's wrong. It doesn't first reason. And second reason that this area is a westland and have a creek underneath go through. And next to that is a natural like, like reserve, like both, like some comes together and serve as a natural habit. So we live there, we constantly see birds, uh, frogs, and also squirrels running around that area. Basically, that's their living environment. Their habit. Uh, we are worried about if we would like to mix use of the area, it will damage the kind of like natural let me have. For the, the nature species. And my, our third reason is that, um, we don't know if we's going to mix use, it will be our constructions. We don't know how long that takes, that's in years. And construction come with noise and pollution, something like that. And we live, the community leave, the levitation is below that. So a lot of noise where. Pollution will go towards us. And it doesn't really make sense for us to sacrifice like maybe several years. With the construction damage just for the kind of semi good for the northeast. It's just like not fair to us. And also, uh, the last point is if I'm on, on for is for mixing use. Let's say it's not like one level like house, maybe several layers. It might have a kind of privacy concerns for us because. Uh, as I mentioned, the levitation over there is higher than our community. So if they send it higher, they can see through our windows. So which means. For our privacy, we, we need to close the window over there constantly and we will lose a lot of sunshine. So. Um, I'm not speaking for the community, but I, uh, live over that area. I believe a lot of. People share the same idea, wasn't it because, uh, we leave a lot of common as well. Yeah, that's mine. Thank you.
Yeah, apologies to you. Um, hi, it's Sherry again. And, um. So where I live is downtown and. I'm a lead, I'm sorry, don't get the computer thing, so I didn't know about any of your outreach. And today I found out because I read those signs you guys had on Main Street. Thank you. Um, but. I've noticed that when I moved in here like years ago, my zone was downtown commercial that. When I bought it had no setbacks. It was very flexible zone. It was mixed, you would call it mixed use, but you know, cause it allowed for a fourplex, it allowed for. By, he told me, I can have a McDonald's. You know, it was, there were no parking requirements, which isn't a big deal for me. Cause I have a lot of lot, but I do have an existing house. I am now nonconforming. The city wants me to move it back. It's brick. I can't. Um, the other option is tear it down. I don't want to. Um, it's over a hundred years old. It's in really good shape. It's not cracking up or falling down or anything. I just, whatever we can do, so I don't have to tear my house down. I, I live on thirty six thousand dollars a year. I can't afford. To tear a perfectly good building down. And it was not a problem when I bought it. I don't know when it became an issue, but apparently it is now and. I don't want this to happen to anybody else. And I know you guys, I. Thank you for all the time you guys put into all of this stuff. But sometimes things you don't think will happen. All of a sudden happen and it can really mess with people's lives. I've had a stroke since this happened. I wanna live there the rest of my life. I love downtown. I love that it's walkable. My, you know, my dentist is close, my bed's close, doctor me, but you know, I have to cross highway too, but you know. It's okay. I can still do it. But it, but I, I really love downtown and I really love Monroe. And I don't wanna have to leave. And I don't wanna feel like I'm gonna go bankrupt. Because of, you know, changes made to zone or, or overlays or I don't even know what it was that happened, but. Now I'm, I'm a nonconforming. So I just wanna be left alone and leave it there and not tear it down. So. Thank you, guys. Yes.
Are you referring to your detached garage?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Well, it's not, it, it was a.
I know, I know, I know. It's not.
It went to a garage in, in seventy one.
The detached unit.
Curned, it was converted back in ninety seven.
Yeah.
So.
I just wanted to clarify, it's not the primary.
It's not, not my primary.
It's the detached off the alley. We're working on that. Like ADU codes and GMA.
Nonconforming, it's a setback.
It's a setback issue, cause there were no setbacks back in the day. So, sorry.
No, 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 no. Those are good comments.
Okay, that is it for the list. Okay.
Okay, can you go to the, you know, stop the public settlement?
I'm gonna ask now, the motion to close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Thank you, Melanie.
I move to close the public testimony portion of the hearing. I will second.
Thanks, Carla. Commissioners in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, opposed. Okay. And.
I just want the, the judge to know itself that gives them their options for today.
Gotta be better like eighty. I'm sure it's a nice motion ready for you. Note itself.
Yeah.
Oh, not football here.
No, we, we just, we just.
Thanks.
All the commissioners voted yes on closing the public testimony portion. I'm waiting for commission votes on the motion. You guys. Had a motion.
No, so do you want me to give you your options? Is that what you're looking for?
I, I believe.
Or you're.
Yeah, I already love it to.
Close the public testimony.
So we have Commissioner deliberation. Any discussion commissioners? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing comments. Oh, thanks, Kelsey.
This session, and so, um, for the. This is just for the doning or this is for our, um, the whole comp plan? To pose like all, everything for it.
Comp plan, so all, or, or all eleven chapters, the future land use map. And that is everything.
Has had access to the, like, the final document since Friday. It's like eight hundred page. Like, yes, I'm, as discussion is for like, for all of us, I'm thinking about moving forward on it. I feel like that's a really short time for. Uh, the public to be able to review. Not sure what we can do to give people more time, cause, um, it's, it's really big and it's full of a lot of. Great information, but I don't know if I feel super comfortable moving forward on a decision without.
Kelsey, can you speak? We can barely hear you.
Sorry, I, I'm saying I don't. Since the public has only had three days to review like a nine hundred page document, I'm not feeling super comfortable moving forward on. Um, a decision until the public have more time to review it. So. Just wanted to say that for discussion.
I, I wanna clarify. At the last meeting, I understand the postcards. So we, we, most people in the community did receive notice a week and a half ago. That these documents were available on the website. How many? Four thousand postcards went out in addition to the information already online. If you want to extend it, we did provide you that option. You can extend the public hearing to, um. Next Monday. But you just closed the public testimony portion already.
They wouldn't be able to.
I wanna make sure you're following procedure.
This is my first hand game, so. Patience, but, um, yeah, I just wanted to say that for all of us, like, starting. Moving forward on a, on a decision, cause it was, that was a good public comment. This is what we're here for, to make sure that these problems. We don't have to backpedal on anything. And it does seem like there's some stuff that I feel like. Um, I would like to think about a little bit more on.
So from a procedural standpoint, Kate makes a good point. So everybody understands. You have closed the public testimony portion of the hearing. If you extended the hearing until, until next week, you could reopen it. Um, but if you, but you would need to reopen it if there are folks here that wanna make public comment. Freddie.
Um, I, I, I heard Kate say that, um. To, that she could give us all the different options. I think that, can you give us those? Cause I think that helps aid in the discussion because, um. Knowing what the options are, helps us to be able to decide, like.
So, um, the requested action originally was conduct your public hearing to receive public testimony, written comments and in-person oral testimony. At the conclusion of the public hearing, consider all the background materials and public input. Uh, written comments, oral testimony to make recommendations to the city council regarding this GMA compliant periodic update to the city of Monroe's. Comprehens the plan and direct staff to prepare findings and conclusions to support the recommendation. Uh, then we, if you go down to alternatives, your option is to continue the public hearing to next Monday. Or you can still continue, um, you can just continue your deliberation and direct staff. Uh, after the next meeting to prepare findings. Sorry. Don't look. Uh, at the bottom. So basically, you can, you can close things up tonight or you can continue to, uh, next Monday. You could have us start preparing most of the recommendation. Uh, if you have specific questions, that type of thing we would need now to come back to you. There we go. So. Does that help?
That helps, um. I mean, I also, we, we don't get a lot of public comment and the comments tonight. Um, bringing us back to some of our beginning conversations of the, of the year when we started comp plan stuff. I mean, we, we had talked about, there was like a checklist that says, you know, what impacts are these? That we had approved, but it's not something that we're using yet. But these are the kinds of like detailed considerations when you're changing all of one seventy ninth. To mixed use. And that then means that the impacts for those, uh, property owners for, you know. Their neighbors or how that changes the area. There's, um, noises and lights and things that come with a mixed use. Uh, commercial property now in a residential zones and, you know, we didn't hear a lot of people mentioning. What that would be, what those impacts would be like. I realize we're really, really far in this process and we need to find. Um, denser housing and more places for people to work, but, um. I also. I don't know, I would like, uh, to think a little bit more and I personally would like to extend the hearing till next Monday as well.
I am ready to make a motion on that, but I wanna give a chance for. Other commissioners to say other things right now, if not, otherwise I'm prepared to make a motion to reflect that.
Okay, but just keep in mind, Alex was pretty clear about why some of the zoning went to mixed use. For job creation. If we make changes at this point. We have job creation areas that we're gonna have to create in another area. And it's. At this stage in the process, that's gonna be very difficult to go through the, that entire process again. This. I'm looking at dates from first part of twenty twenty three when this first started. And to, to have, to go through that in a, in a week, when we spent eighteen months on it. It's a very difficult task.
I'm sorry, I need to interject. If it was not considered as part of the environmental impact statement, if you wanna look in some new area, that is not an option.
Okay.
The, the things that you looked at for the, the two scenarios that got blended to the. Most intense total package. That is your box for consideration for this comp plan update. We, we, we are beyond new consideration. Areas in the community.
Bob.
I wanna remind everybody. Just because we do something specific, do something generally in this complan. It's not a guarantee that anything is going to be built. It's not a guarantee that anything is gonna change. We are under an obligation to provide a plan to satisfy, um, the state and the county. And, um, we're basically boxed by that plan. And so it's like squeezing a balloon. If we try to do something here. That, that obligation has to move somewhere else. Uh, we can't just ignore. As much as we might want to. We can't ignore the obligation that we have for, um, housing. Job creation. Uh, that's, and we will lose in the long run if we don't fulfill our obligation. As much as we may not like it. And I will say, my experience has been. It seems to the public like the sky is falling. But in general, things in, in the planning world take decades, decades to happen. So things may change ten years down the road. And so we really don't need to end it today. Our work isn't done because the zoning ordinance, the zoning code is probably the most important document we had to work on. But that's where the, the rubber meets the road as far as impacts to the city. Um, this is right, this is a thirty thousand foot view when we start looking in on the, on the ground floor of, of our. Map of what we want the city to look like. Then that's when you wanna. So I'm not, uh. Much in favor of delaying this action in one way, in one way too.
Kelsey, did you have other comments?
Yeah. Um, what?
Nine o'clock then.
I can do that.
Melanie.
I move to extend the meeting beyond nine o'clock.
Okay.
All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Usually an internal clock goes off in Melanie's.
That was, that was a thumbs up, not a raise my head.
Switch it to a little range.
That happens.
There's a little delay. Um, so when we first started talking about this two years ago, we were like, where are we going to find all this housing? Where, how are we going to get there? And then when we reassessed on how much um, has been annexed in. Um, we were actually pretty close to the number of housing that we needed, and that's what I heard here tonight. Um. So I'm wondering, what I would like is some more information on how many vacant buildings we vacant commercial buildings we have. Or like, did we do a a little assessment on that? So we can know how many we actually need, because I do think some of our information on like how many jobs we had might have been a couple of years old. I'm not sure on that, but if we're like closer to that number. And we don't need to provide four thousand jobs now, maybe now it's only two thousand or or I don't know what those numbers are. And and maybe we have updated ones. I don't know. I just am like trying to make sure we're not like overextending. On needing commercial when there are, like, we can see that there's vacant buildings in our city driving around. And um, if those have not been accounted for because. For some reason, people can't get these permits to do what they want. Um, and now we're just going to have more. Like opportunities to have vacant commercial buildings. I think that that's unnecessary to do. So coming back, some information that I'd like. Is like, do we have vacant um, vacant commercial buildings and how much? How many um, jobs can those support for the next?
So I, Kelsey, that point will take, and I think the the challenge with planning and kind of the dynamic. Part like all things are, there's always permitting, there's vacancies, there's there's occupied units. Um, with this, this, every city has to deal with this where you you stop at a point in time, you plan for that that point in time. And so for the buildable lands inventory, that was twenty twenty one. And so that's where we we had our our housing and employment targets that we took. As we started this process, we moved to another point in time where we took all the permitted projects for when we were, when we started the actual comprehensive plan process. And we're able to back that out. So since that that time, there's been new construction, there's been new permits, there's been, you know. All sorts of elements, but you have to to be able to to complete a plan. You have to put a point where you're going to stop the kind of reanalysis of that growth. To be able to to determine how you're meeting that or not meeting those targets. There is uh, from a housing perspective in particular, that's one reason why there's, you know. Not quite a thousand units that at the time when we did this analysis were already permitted and you were able to account for that as a part of your your target. The biggest issue with Monroe in terms of growth was not housing in the macro sense. It was the economics around affordability. And so. Those permitted process projects are generally single family homes that beat those higher incomes. The challenges meaning those lower incomes that the state is requiring us to look at is your thirty thirty to fifty. Um, coupled with some with modest employment growth targets, that's really what wants us to start looking at mixed use and other types of. Of uses combined in those areas so that you could meet your targets as well as your affordability metrics. So to Kate's Kate's point, you know, the zoning is still to be determined for some of these areas. Um, you know, I expect, you know, we've been talking about this, that. A future land use class, a single future land use class of excuse or commercial would not necessarily be implemented by a single zone. There could be a number of zones that you'll find within that 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 future land use class. And that's typical of cities. You'll have broad brushes of color on your your comprehensive plan map. Your zoning map will be much more detailed. And so that's the really the next step, the next iteration of what the comprehensive plan is. But you have to. You have a a line, you have a you have a cut line essentially of when you have to stop that accounting and then figure out where you're at and how you're going to meet those targets.
I mean, one of the other things and sort of the dynamic nature, I think that Alex has mentioned is that when the. Any point in time for say vacancies in downtown is going to be changing. Um, I I don't, I don't think that the percentage of the vacancy has probably changed dramatically. From the time that that we had done an analysis for for the um, you know, how much space there was in downtown. A lot of it is based on the zoning and what is allowed there in terms of in terms of the density. Uh, the other, the other piece is, I mean, there's from a month to month. Standpoint that vacancy number could change. Um, I I like I said, I don't think that the percentage, the percentage of vacancy has has changed dramatically or anything is dramatically changed. Since since we um, since the numbers that we're using for those analysis um, for the for the modeling has occurred. I mean, that that would be, that would be my take on it. Randy.
Um, I think that what I'm hearing from Kelsey's question about the vacancy rate and what's resonating with me is. You know, the, our goal is to not have um, sprawl for housing, right? And we have a lot of commercial spaces that are vacant. And now we're talking about making some sprawl into our residential areas. So that we can possibly get a few more jobs here and there, but also disrupt um. Neighborhoods. And yes, I know we've been working on this for eighteen months and I'm definitely not saying, oh, we need to find all new places to to put these things. I'm saying, I think we do have the, maybe the, maybe it is a more deep dive into zoning to figure out why are the those places vacant. But it's just something to be mindful of that um, now that we're getting to the end where we're saying, yep, this is, I want to put my stamp of approval on this. What I am seeing is we have, we're kind of having sprawl of retail and commercial into residential areas. When we maybe don't actually need to do that. And uh, we have spaces that are underutilized or not being utilized. In, I'm not talking downtown like Monroe and on the main street, but like on US two. You know, there's the whole coastal building is over half vacant. Um, and I I know we keep saying that our industrial area is to its max, but there is still vacant parcels in there. And some vacant buildings in there. So um, again, I'm just want to be really thoughtful for the people. Who are experiencing the the changes and um, I would like to think about it a little bit more before I say I'm ready. To make these changes. And if anything, I would, I'm I'm mentioning being. A change not to expand what um, the EIS already looked at, but uh, because we did the max, but you can go less than. Uh, what the EIS looked at, so. I think also the thing we had talked about at one point um, is that at some point, they're they're going to start counting the work from home jobs. Which are not in the count right now, but um, that's likely that that's going to happen and that would add a lot of jobs to. To Monroe, because I think um, all of us know a lot of people, including our own selves, that work from home, so. Is there any update on that?
So that one, um, the clarification is we cannot do projections on that. It's more of a acknowledgement at the next snapshot in time. Um, how many are out there? The complexity of the work from home is in many of the situations. You, it's it's not just work from home, but you are tethered to a physical location somewhere else. So if you are part of a job. At Department of Corrections, but you get to work home three days a week, that does not count as a new job. Your job is associated with the Department of Corrections. So the challenge is a cottage industry. Or somebody who truly they're they're, they are not tethered to a brick and mortar location elsewhere. Their sole job has been created at their home.
Uh, is there talk then about um, like Uber eats delivery people and things like that, like those those type of. Jobs that those are based locally? Is that a part of the conversation in the larger planning group?
We don't have that information yet, period. It it's not provided at the state level.
Randy, when when you mentioned sprawl, are you referring to allowing commercial use? Where residents was they solely use at the time?
Yeah, like the, you know, the change on one seventy ninth to have retail, mixed use. Um, and in some of the, another area, that triangle area by highway two off one seventy ninth. That is got some retail and then residential pocket and uh, changing that all to mixed use. That, that to me is we're adding more jobs. Instead of just like already using the spaces that we have uh, better and creating jobs there through better. Possibly through better code for business owners and things like that. That's my concern.
I think we're going to need to have Alex reiterate that mixed use doesn't mean commercial. Mixed use means a mixture of commercial and higher density residential. So.
Um, but that's correct. And you could have, within that, you could have um. Small scale commercial, you could have multi-family, you could have mixed use buildings, your traditional mixed use, which is retail on the ground floor with with housing or. There's a, again, it's from usual energy's map standpoint, it's it sets the intention and then the zoning is really where. Uh, this starts to get into the weeds of what actually.
Can I also add, just from the employment forecasting and analysis? Having vacancies does not help us in the big picture because we've assumed that those commercial buildings have X number of employees. Per square foot on building, blah, blah, blah. So by um. Meeting our goal in twenty forty four, not only do we need to refill those vacant buildings, but we need to find more employment. And that's what we've been trying to explain, and I apologize if we are not clear about that, but. We are behind if those vacancies are occurring now, because that means. In theory, people are leaving the community to find work instead of going to a job in a vacant building today.
I also think maybe a picture, if Alex and Kate paint a picture of how. Mixed use might develop eventually in the future near a hospital. So I'm thinking of. Um, like in West Seattle, there's live work lots where a licensed medical professional could work in the bottom floor and have. Second floor and the third floor as living space. And so they would run them like row houses. Like six of them in a row where they would be licensed medical professionals, you know, six offices in a row. And they have residence, their own residence.
Yeah, that's, that's true, like for mixed use, mixed use hospital or or medical, something like that, that could be. We're seeing this in other cities as well too, as as hospitals grow, they need additional office space for practitioners. Um, but they also need places for people to live, you know, on a temporary or permanent basis. They need places for nurses to live. And that's one thing we heard through the community is that it's very expensive to live in the row. And so that gets to the being able to live near where you work. And so the hospital is obviously a major employer, but also a major destination um, for people coming in to use those services. So a mixed use medical um, class or zone typically caters to that that type of development. And so it could be, could be office, um, could be medical, it could also be residential.
Thank you.
Just because we have designated certain things maps for this content. Which is for twenty forty four. Doesn't mean that that is like set in stone, that can never be changed all the way to twenty forty four. Correct? I mean, there could be so many different scenarios of economic change of different things that happen in the world. That could greatly change things, like we'd never plan for a pandemic to happen. Um, if if even though we have heard this. It doesn't mean that you can never ever change it, that, correct?
So I'm going to, I'm going to provide one answer, but there's a couple of things. Um, state law has changed that we actually have to provide the Washington Department of Commerce a status report in five years. So that will be your first look. Are we achieving what we said we were going to achieve? And if not, we're going to be asked, you're going to have to open up your plan again and reassess. Is it your zoning? Is it your land use designation? Then currently the GMA and the state keeps changing their mind. Is it every ten years you got to do this update? Is it every eight years? On top of that, you could be doing sub area plans once a year and that information can say, oh my gosh. We have way more capacity in one area for one type of uh, land use we're trying to achieve. So um. You can, and I'm not going to say an annual of comp plan process. That is um, that is available, but in order to really see, um, I think what you're you're asking about, it's these bigger picture. And every ten years right now, we have to open this whole thing up and reassess. The new one is in five years, yeah, in five years, in five years. We're going to have to do this all over again. We're going to have to show the state that, yeah, we did, or we 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 are making progress or we're not. And if we're not, we're going to be back here, having these conversations again and hiring very smart people who can model land use.
But as Mr. Patrina said. All the growth in our city and things are happening, it's going to take time. I I I really wouldn't anticipate us having among this major changes in the next five years. You know, so we are going to reevaluate in ten, which I think is probably very apropos. I mean, I would think these timeframes are being set for a reason. On, and if we look at our growth plan, I'm saying. I I don't think that what we're agreeing to tonight is something that we're going to worry about next year. Or the year after. I I think that we're trying to get a little too technical. I don't know.
Bob, this is supposed to be a real. High level view. Granularity comes later, as we get into the specifics of land use and zoning. And realistically, until there's a. Someone comes and wants to build in a certain place, that's where the real work begins. So, you know, there is no, there is no negative impact. Immediate negative impact at all with the even review here, right, this meeting, until we do, are we going to get our development? Proposal. And then then we really have to look and see how are we going to work within those zones that are in the land uses. That's what really is the work needed to do. At this point, we're, we're trying to meet a mandate. Regulatory mandate is all we're trying to do. And we will work to get more detail in the neighborhoods and. Later on, as we move forward.
Randy?
Kelsey.
Or Kelsey, I'm sorry.
So you're saying like, um, that, yeah, maybe we don't get um, like immediate result. Or aftermath from that, but I mean, this woman got a nonconforming right away overnight for doing that. And I I don't really understand enough of like how fast these things work. Or if it's like now that she went to do something, or if these um, if like taxes don't go up until things are. Um, are built next to them, like now that these are mixed use, they're not, like you said, they're not them, it's not going to. Their tax assess is not going to be up every year because of mixed use. Someone has to go in and do a mixed use there or a big building. Is that? Is that how that works?
I'm definitely not an expert. We would want to reach out to Sussar's office, taxing um. My limited knowledge. Uh, first off, I do want to clarify. If the city moves forward with a comp plan and then you follow through with a with a citywide rezone and you do the code changes. The areas that are identified to move from detached residential and whatever density to mixed use. That standalone dwelling will become a legal nonconforming use, which does have implications for the property owner. That being said, the city of Monroe is extremely generous on. for the property owner. That being said, the city of Monroe is extremely generous on what you can do with residential units. And I suspect it's partly because of the conversation we're having this evening. What does that do to private property? Um as for assessed value and taxes, that change, my understanding is that it it does, it's not immediate. It happens over time. And the little knowledge I have, again, I would want to ask an expert to come in. Is that the bonds that you all approve fire school having more immediate impact on your property taxes than a comp plan designation and a rezone? But I want to be clear, it may have a impact on those properties that you are considering to change from residential to mixed use.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, the issues. The snowbank is not related to what we're doing tonight.
No, uh that is zoning.
It's zoning and and code enforcement.
Uh, a a little of both, but it's it's more, it is more zoning. And and to be frank with all of you, you're gonna see two sets of code amendments coming that will actually help relieve her. One is we are again back to the state required to adopt changes to accessory dwelling units. And you are also gonna see a change for uh existing structures converted to residential uses. So from a use perspective, it will help, but from building codes, that may not, that may not help in the sense that
We could put setback requirements in our land use system, right?
Right, but the state's already telling us that if it's non-conforming because of stat setback, we cannot prohibit it to be converted to residential. The clarity on that is that it still must meet building code. And those code changes will be coming before June of, the end of June of twenty twenty five, which is a completely separate conversation than you are having this evening.
Melanie?
Do we have a precise language somewhere? Moving forward. I see kind of the like the direct staff to prepare findings and conclusions recommending that Monroe City Council approve the comp plan. I didn't see other options. Um and then it, the last one we did, it was different on here, shorter with more on the screen. So I'm just making sure, I just wanna share.
With the language.
So if we make motion. Yeah, that is your option prepared for you to move forward. The alternative is a request to continuation to next Monday. And you can continue the conversation and we can come back with an alternative findings for your consideration.
Kelsey?
Ari, um, I, if we could open the, I I would like to, can we open back up the public hearing then for comment for next week if we do decide to um extend? Is that how we can get public to still talk, right?
And you can reopen the public hearing. So first of all, we would, I am not interested, just to put it out there, I'm not interested in in continuing this next week. So I'm just gonna put that out there.
Make a motion and we'll see how people feel. I move to direct staff to prepare, prepare findings and conclusions recommending that the Monroe City Council approve the Monroe twenty forty four comprehensive.
All in favor, please say aye. Five hands opposed.
Me.
Motion passes five minutes. We had Melanie.
I move to close the public hearing.
All in favor of closing the public hearing, because they high. Opposed? Single five to two.
So even though what we are setting forth, we don't make that decision. It's now gonna go to city council who will make that decision. And ultimately, we can go back and forth, but we are not making any decision, we're making a recommendation.
That is correct.
Recommendation, city council can come back and say, we don't like that recommendation. We want it to be this.
That is absolutely true. So the council, um, it's easy to go back. The council has two workshops and a public hearing on November twelfth, correct? So they're going to repeat this process. The piece that's different is you are forwarding a recommendation with findings. So that's added to this entire package of comments.
So I would like to make, urge anyone who has further comments uh wants to look at this and take a deeper dive on this um to add more input or any kind of thing to do that. The documents are online. The, there will be chance for the workshops and a public hearing which allows for additional public comments in front of city council. Um who would, who are tasked with making the final determination on this. So the, this closing this hearing is not closing the opportunity for public to have input and voice on this. It's, it's moving it forward. Um on a timeline, and we even come back on the fourteenth, didn't talk a little bit more, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. And so it's, and we've moved forward with this recommendation, but there is still a process that is open overall until it is finally approved by city council later this year.
Thanks, Melanie. Wow.
Question, is there a possibility or potential the city council will not long move forward? Is it a fact to us? To have us do a whole work on it?
Where we are and state regulations. I mean, they 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 could make that choice. I would strongly encourage them not to.
Well, I wouldn't think they would want to.
Um, but I mean, it it could also be that the council says, we're gonna adopt this, we're gonna modify it and adopt it. And then turn around, say, planning commission, we want you to start looking at land use in a different capacity. With a big caveat that there are at least three or state regular or state mandates that I am trying to get to all of you for us to be compliant with the state requirements by June of twenty twenty five.
And I would encourage everyone to review page three oh three of our packet that went through all of the community outreach that's been done to get to this place and how we arrived at that name is now. Discussion by commissioner staff, I usually start with our online folks, Mr. Mujin.
I would just say thanks for staff for all the work that was done. That's all I got.
Mr. Dawkins.
Am I there? I don't know why I can't figure that out. Um, I wanna echo that. Uh, the document looks really great and good work, everyone. This was like a long process and um thank you, staff. Thanks, Kate. You're a rock star. Um, and that's all I got.
Randy, Commissioner Blair, please.
Same here, compliments to everyone. Thanks for the discussion. Um, this has been a really long process and you know, from the beginning, they're like, this is gonna be hard and it's gonna be a lot of work. And um now we're getting towards the end and seeing the results of all the work and input and everything we've been um doing over the last year and a half. So, thanks.
No, sharing.
Sharing talk.
It's getting late.
Thanks, Emily, for being here. And I, and I want you guys to know that I highly encourage you to be present at city council. And reiterate your concerns there. And then know that any, anything that comes from this moving forward, you will get a chance to to talk to us again. Several times. Thanks, staff, consultants. Excellent work. Thank you. This is tough.
You know, I think it's hard for, you know, for us as commissioners, for the public, for the staff. And I think all of us have the feel for our residents and what makes things the best for everybody here in the city of Monroe. So, uh and I think requirements that are put upon a, a higher level make it sometimes hard to accommodate every little thing like that. But, you know, I I just think that we do want the people that live in Monroe, that we want the best for them and we want to, we're not trying to make it worse. And I think that's why there's so many of these questions and we wanna make sure we do things right. And because we're trying to do the right and the best thing. Um, so hopefully, you know, we can all work through this process. And, you know, I think we have to also, like I one of the final say on this. And then we can, we can do all we want. And fortunately, it's gonna go another step higher for that, for that. Um, the other thing I wanted to ask, and I know when we get written on a, on a regular meeting, we have staff that responds to questions and stuff, right? Um, which I'm assuming we still do, it's not a regular meeting, we have questions.
So are you asking if you have questions for us?
We got or whatever, or people come and speak, they have questions, we get answers.
So for the process that we are on for the comp plan, all written in oral comments, uh it's actually one of your attachments. That list will be continued to add on. And so uh if we have the contact, we can reach out to them. But part of your record is staff's response, that will be included. It was a
Okay, so that was my, that was actually my question. Cause I've been looking for that. I didn't, I don't know, maybe I missed it.
Um, so for this particular process, it's your exhibits. One D, appendix one D. And so right now there are uh the the written comments from the data, that is written comments from the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife and comments from the Snohomie Tribe. Uh, we, we will include the comments that receive the seed name. And the agency sixty day review period goes all the way through until the uh city council has their public hearing. So I anticipate receiving many more from the public as well as state agencies. And Puget Sound Regional Council and such.
Cause I guess my question was, when we get a written request for what, you know, there are people asking questions, and I know they're answered, but do we see that again? Do we, do we get the answers?
Oh, I see what you're saying. So not comp plan, regular question.
Yeah, just regular, yeah.
Um, we don't, but we could. I mean, you say you're, you would just like to have follow up. We reached out to the individual and this is the conversation.
Yeah.
Um, we are not doing that, but I don't think that's a big ask. We did. So are you, are you asking like the comments that have come in regarding the downtown commercial comments that we were hearing, or is there something specific that you're
And it could just be going forward if you want, but you know, as people are getting, it would be nice for us, I think, it would be nice for me to be able to see the answers. So we, I know in my head the reasoning why and how things are getting solved, knowing the answers.
Okay.
Cause if one person asks, I would think that other people have the same question. So we are learning the answers. Sometimes we can answer people.
Yeah. So I'm gonna say, yes, your request is not unreasonable, but I'm going to put a big caveat. Um, just because we have been given a lot of guidance recently from the mayor and city administrator for code compliance issues, you need to be asking the city manager or city administrator, Deborah Knight. You're not to ask us, but if we get a blessing, we can provide you information and a reminder that the planning commission oversees the comprehensive plan in title twenty two. So I can provide you some information. But I also wanna make sure the planning commissioners understand that your role is kind of contained. But I'm happy to um let you know what happens when you're getting comments.
No, I was thinking more of just um learning or understanding answers.
When it's available, we will do our best.
Thank you. Yeah, that's all you.
Okay. Good. Thanks, Kate. We really don't want to be answering code enforcement questions as planning commissioners, that's our rules. So I don't, we shouldn't take
We're not paid to do that.
No, I don't mean that technical.
And speaking of pay, we had a, a public comments a couple of years ago, asked if we were paying hamburgers. But this goes along to what Carla was saying, is whether we've been in, you know, Monroe for two years for our entire lives, we do this because we want, we love the town, we love Monroe, and we're trying to make it better. So um, I don't think we responded, you know, to, to that particular question appropriately. I mean, we are seriously here thoughtfully, at least twice a month, trying to make this thing better. So, and I wanna thank that everyone. Meg, I wanna thank you for all your time for the last couple of years. Alex, I wanna thank you for, for showing up. Um, we need you the most. Um, thank you to staff. Seven eleven has coffee, which you're gonna need for the road trip. So I, I think that's the only place that's open this late, but um so just wanna say, thanks for getting this all put together. I, I know the commissioners. You know, when it gets to be eight hundred pages, it's a lot to consume in a weekend. And I feel your pain. But this is how a twenty year comprehensive plan looks. And you all know and have acknowledged, we warned you. So Melanie, what do you have for us?
I was just gonna say, it's been, I, I'm wrapping up my third year on planning mission, which is kind of weird to think about. It doesn't feel like it's been that long, but the, you know, the first year was really a lot of prep and warning going into the process of the comp plan, which we were told was a two year process. So currently as it stands, we update, you know, every ten years, we go back at it. But really, it's every eight years because um, once it's done, because you start it and then it's a two year process to get it again to end that ten years. So, you know, we really have been working on this. And I know staff's been working on it since even before then. You finish it once and it's, it's a constant moving thing and state laws change and everything. And so just the amount of work that goes into this. I, you know, thank you to fellow commissioners, thank you to the community who is taking the time to um participate in the, in the various opportunities for feedback. And thank you to those who showed up to comment tonight, who have emailed throughout this. And um, you know, I, I've personally joined planning commission to be part of the process because I very strongly believe in a participatory government. And this is one layer to it. Um, and so I just appreciate when the public comes and is part of that process as well. And I encourage it now, I encourage it moving forward in this and in all things relating to the city, to the schools, to the county. And if at the time, it's, it's hard to be here for this, though. When I'm here in person, I'm having, this is my adult time without children. So, you know, it feels late, yes, but you know, it's, it's good to be here. I appreciate it. Appreciate the amount of time and effort that has been put in by staff, by our consultants, by um anyone, everyone who's been involved in this. And um, yeah. Thank you.
It's Melanie. Matt's.
I wanna thank planning commission and the public for coming out tonight. And I think just as an update, maybe I can start the process of responding or answering um what Carla was asking before. I, I think what I was hearing. As an update, we, there was a, a business owner that came in and was concerned, but that they were somewhat of the genesis of the But that they were somewhat of the genesis of the code amendment addition for the banquet and meeting piece. But, but actually that has been on a list of things that we've looked at. It was just, you know, that. What that single incident was just one piece of kind of a larger conversation that's going on internally. The staff has met with that business owner to, one, um, onsite. And to make sure that they're aware of the process moving forward, timing wise, and what they can potentially do between now. And the time that their, that the code amendment, if it is approved, uh, eventually goes through. So, um, so staff has followed up on that and I, I think that was kind of the nature of your, your, your question, wasn't it? Cause, and just to reiterate, if, if, if any of the planning commissioners get direct questions from people. In, in local folks, business owners or whatnot, the, the best way to respond is to forward that to, to Deborah Knight. Or City Administrator and then she sends those out to, to staff as appropriate. So, um, that was a message that came to, to City Council, cause we've had, you know, they get, they, I think they get more direct. Request or conversations from, from folks being elected officials, so, um, but we'll try to incorporate that as a follow up. When somebody has, has a question or comes and makes a comment at, at planning commission meeting to let you know what's going on. That's all.
This has been a great process in Monroe, it's been a great community work and, um. Super engaged, well thoughtful, um, both, um, both from the community standpoint, people coming to comment, but also planning efficiency council. Get a great advisory room. Uh, comprehensive plans are hard, you just said, Bob, you know, they're complicated. Yeah, they bring emotions about change and what, what that looks like. And so I think the conversations we've had over the past eighteen months have been really, I think, deep and also, um. Really can I tell him and, and the passion people have for the city. I work in a lot of different cities and, um, this has been. Actually a great experience and you also have great staff. And really kind of driving this and kind of keeping it on, keep us on, on task and looking along, so. Especially thank you for the process. I know we got a few more meetings to get through, but, uh, this is, these are hard things to do. We have a great doctor.
I have a shout out for the community as well and the planning commission, um, and a special thank you to Kelsey. She has gone through every single chapter and provided edits and, and comments, so thank you, Kelsey, it, it does take a lot. Um, and the Davises, um, they have been at almost every meeting and done, they've done the deep dive. So I just wanna shout out to them for being so involved in the community and Brandy for some of those early on questions. Um, thank you, we're, we're not done, but we're getting there and, um, I just really appreciate the thoughtfulness of all of you. It's, it is not easy, so, thank you and I'm gonna have Hannah cancel next week's special meeting. That's it.
We're back to normal. I'm just happy it's fall, it's sweater weather. My garden is really confused, I still have a lot of green tomatoes. That's all.
Thank you.
Yeah, I move to a general meeting.
Thanks, Bob. Be sure, in favor, please say aye.